I'd like to call a meeting to order. This meeting is being held in the council chambers and is open for public attendance and participation. Can I have a roll call vote, please? But actually, before we start, I'd like to announce Chairperson Silman is out with an approved absence. She's feeling under the weather.
Vice Chairperson Brookman?
Here.
Commissioner Norrie?
Here.
Commissioner Sandu?
Here.
Commissioner Gill?
Here.
Commissioner Dale?
Here.
Commissioner Campbell?
Here.
All right, pledge of allegiance. Commissioner Campbell, will you lead us, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a routine and justice for all.
I'd like to open for public comment on items not on the agenda. You are welcome and encouraged to participate in this meeting. Public comment on items not listed on the agenda will be heard at this time. Comments on controversial items may be limited, and large groups are encouraged to select representatives to express the opinions of the group. Do we have any written requests?
There were no written requests.
All right. Close public comment. Appearance of interested citizens, members of the public may address the Planning Commission on Items of Interest that are within the city's jurisdiction. Individuals addressing general comments are encouraged to limit their statements to three minutes. Do we have any items from the public or any comments from the public on this item or the items on the agenda tonight? No public comments. Planning Commission Business, Agenda Modifications. Ben?
Staff would like to request that Agenda Item Number Five, tentative subdivision map, TSM 2303 Gory- Gorsi subdivision, be continued to date certain April 24th at 6:00 p.m. So the Planning Commission meeting in April 24th. Due to due to community interest in that location, the staff has conducted, recently conducted a community workshop related to traffic. And then also there's a planned there's a planned there's planned action where we're going to follow up with the city council on a report of that that recent community workshop. And then also a community, there's a planned joint workshop with the city council and the Planning Commission in March. And so staff, to respect some of the community feedback and give time to analyze that and provide the report to the city council and have the workshop that staff recommends to move this item because it's related to development in this Terre Bois region until April 24th.
Do we have a recommendation?
We, and I'd open it up for comment. The developer's representative is in the audience and I'm sure he might have some to add.
Do we have any public comment?
Yes. Hi, my name's Anthony with Hewitt Consulting Group on the engineer who prepared the tentative subdivision map for Mr. Gorsi. Currently, well, I was back a little bit. I just found out today that there was some public concern with development in this area. It sounds like it's revolving around traffic congestion. And like Mr. Moody had just mentioned that there's some upcoming workshops with the city and whether we be discussing those items. What I'd like to say in hopes it persuades you to take care of this item today or keep it going in the meeting is that it's a 2.3 acre parcel that exists as two parcels, one that's vacant and too small to be developed. We're going to be planning to create a total of five parcels that are going to be single-family residential lots. That's going to generate a net of four new single-family residential lots. And it's my belief that this will have very minor, if not negligible, impact on traffic congestion in this region. With that said, I hope you take that into consideration and make your decision free time.
Any questions from the commission?
No questions.
All right, close public comment. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion that we amend the agenda per Mr. Moody's recommendation to move Item Number Five, tentative subdivision map, 23-03 Gorsi subdivision located at 1112 El Margarita Road, subdividing 2.2 acres into five lots on a private street to a date certain of April 24th. Is that correct, sir? And that, once that amendment is made, that we approve the agenda as submitted.
Do we have a second?
I second that motion.
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Campbell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dale?
Aye.
Commissioner Gill?
Aye.
Commissioner Sandu?
Aye.
Commissioner Norrie?
Aye.
Vice Chairperson Brookman?
Aye. Okay. Approval of minutes. Commissioners, is there any interest in modifying the minutes from the last meeting? Nope. All right. Vote to approve the minutes, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Voted. Motion passes. Business Items, Item Five has now been moved to April 24th. Item Number Six, Sutter Heritage Subdivision Map 05-05 and Subdivision Map 08-01. Amendment to the conditions of approval and developmental agreement located at the northeast corner of the intersection of Smith Road and Walton Avenue. Presentation tonight will be by Doug Libby.
Commissioners, good evening. So this next item for you, Sutter Heritage. It's a development agreement amendment and updated conditions of approval. So the purpose of this item is to consider a second amended and restated development agreement for the Sutter Heritage project, together with some updated project conditions. The project site is located South Yuba City, bordered by South Walton Avenue on the west, Smith Road on the south, and Gil Sizer Slough on the east. A brief history. This project goes back to 2005, 2006. However, it was being processed by the city back in 2004. And so in 2005, 2006, the city approved the Sutter Heritage Master Plan, related entitlements, including subdivision map 0505, which was 162 lot, single-family residential subdivision, Phases One and Two. The third phase, which was called out in the master plan on the map, is, was unmapped at the time. And it included a development agreement. Fast forward to 2008, 2009. City approved additional entitlements, this time for Phase Three. Redesignated land to low, medium-density residential. Subdivided Phase Three into 24 single-family lots. So the project included a development agreement, or DA, amendment that had a 20-year term on it. So the project is 33 acres. And total, between the two maps, there are 186 single-family lots. And it includes a .8 acre park. Here's a copy of the the original 05 map. You'll see South Walton Avenue on the west, Smith Road on the south. Pebble Beach Drive, the intersection with Walton and Pebble Beach occurs right here and then would be extended further to the east through the center portion of the project. And I would also draw your attention that the neighborhood park is located in this location. So you have Phase One, Phase Two, which are part of the first 2005 map. And then Phase Three was located over here. Phase Three, this is what it looks like and created the 24 additional lots. And that was subdivision map 0801. You've seen this slide before. Development agreements allowed by state law. Address issues beyond standard planning, zoning, and development design standards. They're very unique. They can include a wide range of things that can be incorporated. And so each one is unique and must be considered on its own merits. So what's included, what are the big items included in this development agreement amendment? Well, this project, the DA will eliminate the old Section 3.5 that required a 10% of housing be dedicated as affordable or pay an in-lug fee. And the reason why we're proposing to eliminate this is this obligation was never a city requirement because the city had never adopted an inclusionary housing ordinance. So it didn't have any detailed requirements and an in-lug fee was never even adopted. Result is having that on the project created a competitive disadvantage in the marketplace and basically contributed to a large part why this project hasn't developed over the last 18 years. As you can imagine, if you have, if you're a merchant home builder, you come to an area, you're looking for existing approved maps. And if you can purchase a project that doesn't have that requirement versus one project in the community that does, which project are you going to buy? And so, to a large extent, that's a big factor why this project never got off the ground. The updated agreement also includes Pebble Beach was envisioned to be a main thoroughfare to connect to Highway 99. It's no longer viewed as likely. I think we would all agree, we have enough stoplights on Highway 99. And Pebble Beach will terminate within the development. So as a result, Pebble Beach will become a minor residential street just for this subdivision. The exciting part about the park is the agreement will provide for the park to be constructed before the issuance of the 82nd building permit. The park will be developed consistent with the master plan and include playground equipment for those age two to five and those five to 12. And some additional details are included in proposed Condition Number Five. And this image that you see on the screen actually came, comes out of the, the master plan itself. So additional changes. Update the agreement to have a similar format as other recently approved agreements. And the term of the DA is proposed to be expanded, extended. The original agreement had a 20-year life, so expands, extends to 2029 currently. They're going to add some additional years. So basically, if it were approved this year, we'd have 10 years to build up, build the project. So the conditions of approval. The conditions are 18 plus or minus years old. Some of the conditions were not consistent with current city standards. A lot of the conditions, we found, were repetitive, cite existing municipal code requirements that must be followed regardless whether you put them on as condition or not. So to try to facilitate development of the project, staff working with the landowner team has completely rewritten the project conditions to something that you would see today to comply with both the master plan, the municipal code, and current city standards. Probably what I'm most proud of is that going through this process, we were able to reduce the number of conditions by 51% from what were originally adopted. So from around 100 conditions down to 49, which is proposed. This will make it easier for both any merchant home builder who wants to buy this project to implement it as well as staff to try to follow along and implement the project. So environmental. Because this project came in at different phases and different points in time, there were actually two environmental documents prepared for it. Resulted in mitigated negative declarations back in the 2005, '06 timeframe as well as the 2008, 2009 timeframe. So the amendments that are proposed, we feel are consistent with the master plan, including the needed infrastructure, will be consistent with the existing adopted plan, Public Works Improvement Standards, the adopted zoning code. We will implement all adopted mitigation measures. And so as a result, no additional environmental review is required. For everything we do, when you act, you must make findings, which are your rationale for the decision-making that you have. And so the state law provides the four findings that must be made for a development agreement. The responses to those are in your proposed resolution. So typically, you see this slide when we bring forward subdivision maps. And so state law provides that you, you can only deny a subdivision if you can make one of these findings. Well, that also extends to amending the conditions of approval, which we're proposing to do. And so staff feels that none of those findings can be made. And so, which is another reason why we support updating the project conditions as proposed. Recommendation, there's three of them. I'll try not to read it to you. Conduct a public hearing. Adopt a resolution, the Planning Commission recommends it to cancel. Approve an uncodified ordinance, amending the second amended and restated development agreement for Sutter Heritage between the city of Yuba City and the property owners listed, located on the northeast corner of the intersection of Smith Road and South Walton Avenue, assessors parcel number 5603065. And finally, adopt a resolution of the Planning Commission, making the findings to determine that additional environmental review is not required and contingently approve amendments to the conditions of approval for subdivision map 0505 and 0801 for the Sutter Heritage project. So that would conclude my comments. I would note that the project representative, Dan Cucci, is here and he will also have some comments for the project. So thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Any questions from the commission?
Yeah, I have one question. That, that stipulation about the 10% of the properties for controlled cost or rent or are there any other tentative developments that have that same stipulation that we know of?
No.
Mr. Chairman, I, I have a question. Thank you, sir. Mr. Libby, can you address the issue of the resizing of Pebble, is it Pebble Beach Drive? Pebble Wood, Pebble Beach, Pebble Beach Drive?
Yeah, Pebble Beach will be extended into the project. But because it's going to change from, I'll say, just being a more main thoroughfare to being a local road, it's actually going to result in the road needing to be smaller.
Understood. So my question in, in regard to that is what impact does that have on the layout of the subdivision? Is that going to allow for an increase in number of lots? Are they gonna, what's the, I guess, quite simply, my question is, is the changing of the, reducing the size of that road going to change the number of lots that are available to the developer?
It's not uncommon when you see minor changes like this. As long as it doesn't result in additional lots being created, that you can submit a map, which is called a substantial conformance map.
Okay. So we might see some changes in lot depths or widths, but?
So yeah, the, that would not come back to your commission.
No, understood. I meant we as the city.
Yeah, the city would, would see that.
Yeah, that would be administrated.
Correct.
Perfect. I just wanted to make sure there was no increase in lots proposed or possible. Okay, thank you, sir. That's all. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Libby. Like to, at this time, like to open public hearing on the item. Any member of the public like to speak?
I can quite understand how that works.
You'd have to go up to the?
I'm sorry.
You're wel, you're welcome to come talk after. Yes. Good evening, commission. My name's Daniel Cucci. I'm with the law firm of Avdus and Cucci and I represent the applicants tonight. I primarily, I'm happy to answer any questions you have. I can dive in even into the question on affordable housing if you wish. We represent both affordable, affordable housing developers as well as private developers and deal with these questions about, you know, affordable inclusion policies and how they affect, you know, the financing of projects. Ultimately, I think, you know, really want to thank Doug for such a fantastic presentation, really laying this out for us. And frankly, Ben and Doug have been fantastic. And I really want to thank them for all their hard work of helping us get here. And and, and so we appreciate your consideration of this project. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Any questions? No questions, room? Thank you, Doug.
Thank you, Ms. Cucci.
My name's Calvin Low. I live over there in that north area. And I was wondering about, you're saying extending Pebble Beach. That road of South Walton, South Walton is busy. Are you going to put four-way stops signs out there? Because it is, and you said you're going to narrow Pebble Beach. Because I live off of Hazel, is four-way stops included with that because of the traffic?
Ben, can you answer that one?
Yeah. Yeah, I'd be happy to. Just to reiterate on some of the stuff that Doug has mentioned is that so when this project was originally approved in early 2000s, there was plans for Pebble Beach to continue to the east and tie into Highway 99. That is not the city's current goal. We've done a new traffic model update based on Gil Sizer Slough, connections to the highway, limiting those, the, the potential use of that property on the other side of the canal as a commercial piece in the future. The, the traffic model for the city does not show Pebble Beach going past, to the east, past Gil Sizer Slough. So it's really just an internal, local roadway to service that neighborhood. And so we don't want to build big, wide roads because the experience is big, wide roads make people go fast and they're expensive to maintain. And so it's, it's a win-win to have better land use that we don't, that we're not maintaining roads that nobody are on. And so in the conditions of approval, we really looked at that first block about having it. So it would be, we called out a width for, so if you're going westbound at the stop sign, you would have a, a westbound lane. You'd have a straight and a right, a bike lane. And then on the south, you'd have one coming in. So it, so it's designed for a nice, comfortable local road. And coming down Walton, there's a center turn lane where people would get into the center turn lane and then turn into the roadway. You know, as we get into, we're a long ways away from actual construction. And you know, there's improvement plans that had to be finalized and then phases depending on how things get phased. And but there's no anticipation of putting a stop sign on Walton Avenue for this size of development.
And one more thing. Smith Road does flood out when you go down there. It does accumulate from the orchard. But if that's going to be a development, that means drainage, correct? Or that, because when you come down like this, it always puddles up and stuff. And so you're going to have flooding down there on Smith for Gil Sizer Slough.
Ben, is that another one you can add to Smith?
Yeah, absolutely. So so, so not to want to pass the buck, but where it happens is with construction in the city, they have to meet city design standards. And with city design standards, they have to have utilities, they have to have stormwater, they have to have water, sewer, and things have to be graded to drain so it meets our criteria where there's, there's clear criteria for design standards regarding establishing capacity for 100-year flood protection and how that drains and gets into the Gil Sizer Slough. And so if there is existing drainage that's coming off, that would be minimized because it will then go into the constructed utilities and put to the drainage. And then we're usually cognizant where we run up against existing properties because we don't want to put two-foot walls up around an existing property. So there's, there's some, there's some, there's some language in the conditions. And then also through our design standards, that when things come through, that we make sure we're cognizant of adjacent property. Because absolutely, we don't put any more drainage onto the existing properties. But at the same time, we don't want to build walls and fortresses that stop adjacent drainage. So we, we look at, that's really a function of the engineering department, the design review process, and then the conditions of approval. But there's, from the, from the new hardscape that's built with its development, it is captured, analyzed, considered, that it meets, meets the flow requirements, groundwater recharge, stormwater, you know, all the sweepy stuff. And then discharges into Gil Sizer, which was coordinated with Sutter County as the manager for Gil Sizer, that we're meeting all that criteria.
Thank you again.
So you're saying that you're going to put drainage there? Because there's no drainage. Right? There's no at all.
There, as the, as the project is constructed, half of Smith Road will be built. Any of the new properties will have drainage, curb gutter, sidewalk, and drainage inlets.
Thank you.
And I'm a little confused when you say affordable housing, because I live there. What is affordable housing, market value or what? That's my question for the councilor. You know what I mean? Because when you say affordable, that's the language where everybody can afford. And you can bring people in to afford those houses. But is it a single? You know, you're asking for families or what? Apartments or what, two stories and everything like that? What's affordable?
Doug, can you take this one, please?
Yeah, absolutely. So part of our problem is that because the city had not adopted an inclusion housing ordinance, none of those things were specified, which is why we're asking to remove the requirement. But separate from that, big picture, a lot of times affordable is looked at as no more than 30% of, of income. That's one category of looking as far as you put your income towards housing. And then when you look at both a federal, federal HUD requirements, they have different income thresholds, which are based upon your area median income. And there's different categories for that. But for this project, that obligation, we are asking to remove it. So it would be a market, it's going to be a market rate project. So what we mean by that is whatever the, the market price in the area will bear.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you. Oh, thank you. Any more public comment? I'd like to close public comment at this time. Commission, are we ready to make a motion? We do have one question.
I just want to know, I know you were saying that this project may go out another 10 years. Is it going to, at any point, come back to the commission? Or are we pretty much, has it been already been built out and ready from that aspect?
So if the commission contingently approves the conditions, we would then move forward to take the development agreement amendment onto the city council. And if it is adopted, then at that point, it shifts back to the, kind of the landowners. And then they would probably work to sell the project to a home builder who would then come in and work with the city to actually build out the project, submit improvement plan, it's that type of thing. But as far as the term of the DA, yes, extends out to 2034. I should note, there's a provision in there that if that were not enough, they could actually, upon mutual agreement, the DA could be extended out further. But that's only upon if the city and the landowner agree.
Thank you.
Right at this time is, do we have a motion?
And I recognize there was a lot there. So if it would simplify it for you, you can just say, I'd like to make a motion for the recommended action reflected by staff.
I'd like to make a motion for the recommended, uh, sorry, what?
Make a motion for the recommended action by staff.
Make a motion for the recommended action by staff.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion in a second. A roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Campbell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dale?
Aye.
Commissioner Gill?
Aye.
Commissioner Sandu?
Aye.
Commissioner Norrie?
Aye.
Vice Chairperson? Vice Chairperson Brookman?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item seven, city welcome sign, ad hoc committee, staff presentation by development liaison Ashley.
No one wants to listen to my presentation.
Boy, everybody left.
This one's fun. This one's fun. You might want to stay. Good evening, planning commission. Happy to be here. This will be nice, short, and sweet. So the item that I have before you tonight is regarding the city welcome signs. You're probably all very familiar that the city has two welcome signs, one south of Uba City on Highway 99, kind of south of Bog, and then one on Highway 20 headed west, I think it's around Township. But in the last probably year and a half, the signs were actually removed. So the element that was removed is the circle. So the base is remaining, which you may have seen. And the reason why the signs were removed is because of disrepair. They were, they were getting relatively old and out of shape, and so they were removed. The, what we have before you tonight is part of the process to get new signs. So it's very exciting. So we started this process, it's a, it's a two-phase design process. First, a design competition. Second phase will be a request for proposals to actually have it fabricated, constructed, and put in place. The design competition went live in December 2023. It was in collaboration with Uba Sutter Arts. We collaborated with the school district and sent out this call for artists to receive submissions for a, a new welcome sign. And it was kind of left open, whether it be similar to the one we had before or completely different. We did receive about 10 submittals. So that's very exciting. And the, I'm all out of order. But we received 10 submittals, and on February 20th, the city council established an ad hoc committee to review the submittals. And they have requested that one member of the planning commission be appointed to that committee. So essentially, what I need from you tonight is to discuss and decide who that planning commissioner will be. One note, there was an original selection date of the winner by March 5. Due to scheduling, we will not be making that date, and the artists who submitted designs have been notified. So like I said, there are two council members that will be on the committee, council member Kirchner and council member Pasquale were appointed to the committee. And then there will be a committee member from the planning commission, senior commission, Parks and Rec Commission, and the youth commission. So my recommendation to you is to designate one member of the planning commission to the city sign ad hoc committee. And if you would be so inclined, maybe give one alternate as well, in case there's scheduling issues.
Thank you. Any questions from the committee?
I don't have any questions, but that sounds fun. I wouldn't mind volunteering or being an alternate.
I have a question. Am I excluded because I'm from Sutter County?
Do you want to be excluded?
No, I don't. I'd actually like to be, I'd actually like to be on the committee. So I'll, I'll throw my hat in the ring unless there's some. Okay, good, good.
Right.
I, I don't feel like the stepchild. I'm, I'm in.
Going to open public hearing on the item? Close public hearing. Back to the commissioner. And yes, anybody else interested? All right.
May I make a motion? Yes, I'll throw my hat in there.
How do we narrow that one down?
I'd say rock, paper, scissors.
There we go. I'm at a loss here on this one.
Can I make a motion? Whoever, whoever makes the motion and then you guys vote. I mean, it's how it works.
Well, that sucks. Whoever makes the fastest motion seems a little.
That's the potential, but it has to get the votes, yeah.
I won't do that.
I will make a motion that we designate Commissioner Gill as the primary representative and Commissioner Dale as the alternative.
Now I feel bad.
I'll second that motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Rule call vote, please.
Commissioner Campbell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dale?
Aye.
Commissioner Gill?
Aye.
Commissioner Sandu?
Aye.
Commissioner Nor?
Aye.
Comis-, or, excuse me, Vice Chairperson Brookman.
Aye. All right, passes. Feature agenda items. Doug Libby?
So next month, you're aware that we have the joint city council planning commission workshop. That's going to be on March 13. So make sure your calendars are reserved for that. We're planning that to be 6:00 PM. And at this point, I believe we're, we're searching for a good location for it, but we will be in touch when we finalize that. Is it at the corp? Okay, it's official, official? Okay. So we will get you the address, but it's going to be held in a conference room over at the corp yard. So they, that's going to be your first, that's at the first regular meeting next month. Now for the second meeting, which would normally occur on March 27, at this point, we have a, a number of items in process, but I think it is actually fairly likely that we're going to end up canceling that meeting. So really, your commitment next month is March 13. That's all I have for you. Then I will turn it over to Ben.
You know, I don't have a lot. I would just, maybe, we got a draft agenda right now that we're going to vet and just maybe to get the, the wheels spinning. The intent is to have the meeting together, have council priorities, just a discussion. A lot of you maybe haven't, we haven't had a joint workshop since you've been on the planning commission. And so it's going to be kind of an open workshop to talk about priorities and then also talk a little bit about development, you know, concerns for maybe both sides. So there's some discussion about that. You know, there's a lot of talk about how, you know, we're working through projects, city standards, general plans, zoning, and then you get to the approval process. And, and maybe there, it's not, it's not what was on our radar, maybe a potential concern. So we're going to try to talk about that a little bit. We're going to talk about roles and responsibilities, our attorney's office. Mr. Fox might be there. I, I think he's going to coordinate with Shannon. We're going to find out, maybe remote or not, but we're going to have one of the attorneys kind of be present and, and go over, just kind of use it as maybe a training opportunity for both the commission and the city council. You know, as far as maybe some of the hierarchy of general plans, specific plans, use permits, you know, and down the way with tentative maps, and then, and then how your role and responsibility plays into that, both for planning commissioners and city council. And then we're going to talk about a zoning audit, which was kind of a, a fun, it fun, but a very important work. Ashley was really involved with it, but we worked with SECOC, and there was a grant to basically analyze our zoning code and look at potential options that make things more housing friendly. And so there was a report given to the city council about that. And there's all sorts of ideas that maybe you've seen around about eliminating parking, reducing open space areas, being a little more flexible on city standards regarding road widths and different things. And so we had a company that looked at our specific zoning code and looked at some of the, you know, they really were able to visualize and build it, a model that says, hey, you're, you're calling for a land use of this density, but then your zoning code requirements calls for this type of setbacks. And when you lay that all out, in reality, you're only really getting this. And so then they gave some, give some pointers about what can be modified and done. And then Doug's going to talk about maybe next steps about where we see development services working on over the next year plus regarding finalizing our general plan update, working towards our general, our zoning code, basically a complete zoning code where we can implement some of these ideas, if that's what's comfortable for the planning commission and the city council and the community. Because with them, there's always, you know, as you get rid of develop, if you get rid of parking, it makes it easier to build and have houses. But at the same time, there's neighbors that don't like you parking in front of their house. And so there's, there's those pros and cons that we'll get into a little bit. And so we're trying to keep the meeting to about an hour and a half. You know, that's usually when people start losing energy. But that's the goal, to kind of have an open dialogue workshop between the city council and the planning commission. With that, it's the corporation yard. We'll send out the address. It's on Market Street, just north of Sutter Buttes Little League. There, the, the field. And there's upstairs conference room. We'll make sure we coordinate the logistics for everybody to, to get there. With that, it's really kind of the new year already and kind of plugging away. Happy to answer any questions.
How did that Oso Fund meeting go?
The, so I, I will, I do plan on giving a report to city council March 19. Ashley was instrumental in, in coordinating it. The feedback that I've had from the city council and some of the teams thought it was really one of the better meetings that we've had, you know, as far as, we thought the site was great, you know, as far as for the number of people. There's about 120 people there. There was, you know, we had the screens, we had staff there to kind of walk through the exhibits. I thought, you know, there's my perspective is that we, they, there was a lot of dialogue about the apartments. We tried to take that in. I thought they were respectful, at the same time, talked about traffic options, you know, and circulation. I think out of it, we're still analyzing it, but it seems pretty clear that there's, we presented four options, just potential fixes or improvements for the traffic. And, and one of them seems to be clear is the connection of Jefferson Avenue from the park, I would say, across the, the drainage canal there to the other side. And so if you're familiar with that, where the new park's at, right now it dead ends. It would basically make a new connection over into that neighborhood, which then would allow people to come in and go out at different, different locations. Let's see, and there's some talk about El Margarita Signal. I, I think a lot of people want that because of the safety concerns, especially on the south side with the high school going northbound and turning. But we're working on kind of what that really means, having another connection on the highway, having another kind of not great laid out. You, you know, it'd be like creating another George Washington almost, where you have a really short frontage road, and then you'd run into problems with existing homes and, and trying to make that connection. I don't think that's really a reality, but there was some talk about that and input because I think of the potential safety concern. So, so those were probably the two. I don't know. I, I mean, definitely everybody had a perspective. We got a year full. But I think, I mean, that's what we get paid for. And I think it was, I hopefully it was productive. So I, I think, I think council, the council members that are there look forward to sharing the results to the full council. And, and they'll probably, we're going to meet with that Terrebonne group next week.
Any, any idea when the project might come back for consideration by the commission?
I do not at this point. So we haven't circled back. I know the developer was at the meeting. Right now, the plan is to, to report back on March 19, and then begin with the developer and kind of figure out their timeline.
Thank you, sir.
So would that come back to the commission or would that go to city council?
At this point, how it is, is it, we go to council, city council.
Council.
I got a quick question.
Yeah.
I think it's been about a couple of months, but you mentioned, kind of in passing, that you were going to meet with Chick-fil-A folks. Did you ever have that meeting?
No.
Is that okay to talk about that?
The body language here is killing me. I was like, yep. Yeah, I mean, I don't know. It's, there's been discussions, there's been emails, there's definitely been, you know, a lot of outreach from our development liaison. And I want to say as recent as today, there was some discussion about a potential property. I think they're a ways off, but there's definitely interest in coming and locating and trying to figure out a spot that works for, for everybody. So, so we'll see. Raising Canes, I think they're this close to pulling their permit, you know, with the weather starting to turn and those improvements on harder pretty much being done. You should see some work pretty mu, pretty, starting pretty quick on the Raising Canes. And so chicken is coming. Chicken, is it chicken nuggets or which one is Raising Canes? Chicken strips, they're going to be soon. But as far as the, the chicken sandwich, we might be a little ways out.
Any more questions?
Well, we're trying to, we're trying to keep that engagement going, so. Oh, that's a great one. Yeah, the, you know, there's, Ashley, some recent work is to promote some of the work that's been going on. And so with some of the promotion is, recently we're putting up banners. I guess it's a banner, but it's really a, it's almost like a billboard. I'd say it's pretty good size, but it's, we just put one up at the southwest corner. So if you're coming out of Walmart to the west, kitty corner there of where the Dutch Brothers is proposed, is a pretty good sized sign that talks about yes to Uba campaign, yes to Uba City. I'm going to get this, you can in Uba City. Oh, I'm, I'm going to get in trouble for that one. You can in Uba City, and you can. And...
All I can hear is Yosemite Sam, "You're fired!"
I'm going to leave that one down. And then, at Bog Road, some of the development work down on Bog Road that's proposed. And so it's, Ashley, I'm going to stop talking for you next time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm, I'm happy to report that we haven't had any truckyard applications in quite some time, although we did have a harbinger of things to come, and we can expect a few more in the coming months. The last meeting that we had, we focused on changes to the zoning ordinance, and specifically with respect to use permits, taking some of those items that are, fit more aptly into the administrative side, where you've got a project that meets all the existing standards within the code. There's really no, where there's no personal judgment or experience needed to determine whether a project's fits within the zoning and the general plan amendment, they're moving to a war more of an administrative approval process. So that was the topic of discussion. Changes are going to continue on that, and it'll end up going to the board supervisors for final approval. And then they're talking about holding, very similar to what we're, you're doing here, we, you are doing in the city, and that is opening up workshops and bringing members of the commission in to discuss the zoning ordinance as a whole, any issues or things within certain portions of the, of the ordinance that, that we might see issues with, and then provide input on how they can change it, refine it, and streamline it, and make it easier to read and comply with for those trying to do business and build within, in the county. And outside of that, I think that's it. Did I, did I miss anything just then? Did a pretty good job? Thank you, appreciate it. So, oh, I, I was asked to come back and, and fill this chair for another year here, so hopefully I'll, I'll get to be blessed with you all here. So it's been my great pleasure, and thank you.